Thank you, everybody, for attending. We'll start in with our attending agenda. Sheriff Gadd, it looks like you are first up. You and Mark Sturderman.
Do you want me to pass that around?
No, it's on Howard here. Good morning. I wanted to bring to your attention the jail chiller is in need of replacement. What I'm requesting is Martin Riley, Architect and Engineers, to do a study and determine the best possible place to place the new chiller. What type and what size we're going to need. The cost for that study is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. We've been looking at replacing the chiller for a while, and we've had several mechanical contractors in, in different scenarios, and what we're getting is a several different opinions.
Can you have him move over there so we can hear it?
Options, push, tight, style.
Mark, just a minute. Would you have a seat over there where the mic's at? They're having trouble picking you up.
I'll look over close to you, Mark.
Again, what we're looking is to hire Martin Riley, Architect and Engineers, to do an evaluation and determine the best way to move forward on replacing the chiller at the jail. The cost for this study is thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Again, we've had several contractors look at the situation, look at our current equipment, and they're coming back with several different options and opinions as to where it should be placed, how we should go about replacing it, what we should be using. When the existing chiller was installed in the jail, it was put in before the first floor was poured. So there's no way to get a single eighty-ton unit back down into the lower level of the jail. This is why we're looking at possibly moving it. Along with, we've had some accidental refrigerant leaks in that lower level because the refrigerant lines run from the lower-level chiller to the condensing unit on the roof. And some of them, two of them, have been significant enough that we've had to evacuate certain areas of the jail to clear the building out. The current equipment is an eighty-ton train chiller, again with the chiller in the lower level, the roof-mounted condensing unit. The life expectancy is between twenty and twenty-five years. We're at thirty years now. I've put down here the maintenance cost history. I've been tracking it for the past couple of years here. In 2015, you see, we had nineteen thousand in repairs. 2016, we had thirty-nine thousand in repairs. And this year, to date, we've spent sixty-three hundred already on keeping the chiller running. And again, since 2015, we've went through three hundred pounds of refrigerant, R-22 refrigerant. And since they are changing, trying to get rid of that, that cost keeps rising on that Once we do this study and determine what type of equipment we should use, should it be on the roof, should it be put back in the lower level, should we put it outside on the south side of the jail, once we determine that, then we can send out the document, the bid specifications. But the cost for replacing is going to run between one hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand. And we'd like to try and schedule this for as soon as it cools down, the end of 2017, going into 2018, start replacing that, if we could. Martin Riley is a company, I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but they don't have any affiliation with, I mean, they're not, they haven't been recommended by any of our contractors that we use now for the HVAC systems. But they would, basically, we would sit down and go over the scope and the specs after they do the study of the building. They would prepare the documents, the bid specifications for the contractors, and put it out for bid. They would review the bids with us, conduct the pre-bid meetings if necessary. And if they, if it's approved, then they would start the study in midsummer to go through the building. Like I said, this is kind of a lengthy process, so we'd like to get started on it, get approval so they can get it on their schedule to start on this. We did have initial agreement drawn up, and the county attorney did approve the language. I did want to have a couple of things changed, so we will have it rewritten and have him look at that again, but he didn't have any problems with the language of the agreement.
Mark, is it normal that nowadays they put them on the roof, or do they put them outside somewhere where it'd be easier access?
It could be put anywhere.
The cost, would it vary whether it's put back on the roof?
Tremendously.
So if we was to move it, like, outside behind the jail, it would cost quite a bit more, it would be at the maximum then to replace?
Not necessarily more. It may be a better option to put there, because if we have any part of this unit in the lower level with refrigerant lines going to it now, we're going to have to put in a monitoring system and a system that will evacuate that lower level. I mean, it would suck out the bad air and bring in fresh air if there were a leak. So this system could be costly also.
But the dis- controlling firm, they'll determine which system is best for us?
Correct. And if we can't put it on the roof, can we put a bigger unit or a heavier unit than what's up there now? Will the roof support it? I mean, they'll do the study. Is there enough electric in the building to put it back where it was? Do we put it on the south side of the building? We could run a complete sealed package unit outside, come in with glycol lines to a heat exchanger, and then chill the water for the building, keeping all the refrigerant outside and not having it in the building at all. There's many different variables here.
And you're sharing with us that Martin Riley has no affiliation with any contractor that we may use? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Correct.
The commissioners have given a favorable pass to this also.
There was another question. The fee, I mean, you've done consultant work with other projects. Is this kind of in line with what things normally cost?
Yeah. They're going to be doing quite a bit of work. They're going to do a structural study on the building to make sure that if we did put something up on the roof, that it could handle it. They're going to do an electrical study, they're going to do, plus, they're going to be working with us on the bid process. And so it's pretty well normal for a consultant fee.
So this, these services they're going to provide to us could give us insight on other maintenance needs that may come up with the building?
Sure.
It's not going to be just, the scope is not going to be just limited to the issue we're having right now?
Roof should support it, because my first thoughts are, they may have to use a spreader, you know, to help support it, or, but that was originally designed to have two stories anyway, so it's structurally pretty sound.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, probably both the offices area is the only part of the building to hold to.
The discussions we've had with some of the contractors that have proposed that were, they understand what we're coming from and saying, you know, it was designed for a second story, therefore, you know, it is on a concrete deck. But without an engineer saying, "You can put this additional weight on the roof," they're not going to do it.
Sure.
So...
Sure.
And as it gets warm this year, just like last year, we're going to have some issues, I'm almost sure of it, we have every year. There's a slow leak somewhere, they tested it, and they find it. Summer, just so you know, there could be additional...
How are we doing with the water lines and everything?
We've had some more replacement. Knock on the door, because we haven't had a leak in a while, but we'll probably have one now since you brought it up.
Well, the thing I was, I didn't know whether it'd be appropriate to look at, if you're going to hire somebody to do a study for you, maybe we should, you know, whether it be, I'm just picking out of the air, but if we have other problems, insofar as plumbing or one thing or another, maybe that should be involved in this.
That would be true, but I think Mark and Kyle have a pretty good handle on the water portion, what needs replacing.
Okay. I'll just bring it up just for, just for the break.
Well, it sounds like what they're, what you're proposing here, what they're going to do, should give us a pretty good idea of what kind of shape our building is in in general, shouldn't it? Not just, not just related to this issue.
This study would be just related to the chiller. Just to the chiller.
But if, I mean, if they're doing structural and electrical evaluations, that's going to give us some insight on where we're at on that?
No. The structural would be only related to the area where we determined it's best to put a heavier unit on the roof. Would that roof support that?
Okay.
The electrical would be, if we decide, let's say, we want to put it on the south side of the jail, how do we get electric to that new unit versus where it's being powered from right now? How to come through the wall with the new glycol lines, where to put a heat exchanger, that type of thing. As far as the water lines, I'm not going to say we're not going to have another hot water research incident, but we've pretty much got that under control. The waste lines, I did get an estimate, I believe that was sixty-eight thousand, to replace the soil pipes in the lower level for the entire jail. And that would have to be broken out into different sections and phases to try and keep everything running.
Sure. That's all copper now, isn't it?
The soil pipes are cast iron.
Cast iron.
Mm-hmm.
Always hate to spend money on this sort of thing, but I think with the amount of investment that's required, I think it's absolutely necessary that we have some professional advice before we proceed with anything. And these maintenance costs are starting to add up pretty good, and it makes this look like a pretty mere figure when you compare it to the maintenance cost, so I would make a motion if we approved this request.
And I'll second that. Do you indicate which area that it should come out of? Is maintenance budget, CUM cap?
I would ask John this question, I guess, would the CUM cap be a place for that to come, far?
It would be able to support it, but I think there would need to be an additional appropriation done.
You think what?
And there would need to be an additional appropriation done.
Later in the year?
Mm-hmm. Whenever.
From the CUM cap, you would, you think this...
Do they have enough in their maintenance to do it, and if they come back, they have to come back for more, or would that be a good way?
You mean for the study or for the project?
Yeah.
No, this was the study.
Oh, just for the study, okay.
Yeah, I'm just asking.
Okay, well, yeah.
You guys don't have an account to take care of things like this, do you? You don't have a lineup?
No, it's through the maintenance studio.
There would be enough money for the study. I thought you were asking for the, for the chiller.
There's money in the accounts, but it's designated for other projects throughout the rest of the year, so, I mean, yeah, if you pull up the accounts, there's money in there, but...
Well, I would make, I'd make a motion, I mean, in my motion, that it comes from CUM cap.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Not a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor of the motion, signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same.
Thank you.
John?
Hi, John.
I would like to add that the commissioners are looking at the 2018 CEDA budget, and we'll be working with Mark on whatever we can do to work with the water and the sewage to, you know, that'll be something we'll be looking at to try to help out. Thank you.
John Myers, I believe you are up next.
Okay. You want me up here for the microphone, too?
Sure.
More the mayor. Yeah, so this, I'm here with the company ASW LLC. They manufacture American Landmaster utility vehicles. This is a project that came in fairly quickly and has, things have kind of gone out of sync here a little bit, in terms of what's typical for these sorts of things. But the company has been, been working with the IEDC and the economic development folks over in Allen County, and kind of toward the end of the project, took a look at the Essex Building out at 600 East, and thought that that would be better for their project that they're, that they're looking at. So they currently have thirty-three employees in Fort Wayne. They also have a number of production employees in Roseland, Louisiana, and this would be a consolidation of their operations into a single building here in Whitley County. So they would start probably August, September of this year, and would, you know, be up in the low eighties in terms of number of employees out there, really, by the end of this year. There's room for growth over the next couple of years. The, so, very, very good paying jobs because it brings both senior management jobs as well as high-paying production jobs to the county. And so they're asking for a ten-year tax abatement on the equipment, that they'll be moving into that facility from Louisiana, as well as purchase of a new paint, painting facility that's going to go in and out here as well. And again, because of the high wages and it just, the project really pays for itself in terms of tax revenue off of CAGIT and CEDIT almost, almost immediately. The redevelopment commission, since this is in the Tiff District, they reviewed this last Tuesday at their meeting and have recommended the granting of the tax abatement that's being requested. So, no, I was all concerned about the confidentiality of this, because typically, the IEDC will not grant, will not give their incentives unless, number one, there's commitment from the county as well, but also if they just don't want a release going out before, or anybody, information being public, before they say something about it, and they kind of crossed their wires and ended up making their announcement last Friday, so you may...
I thought I heard about it already.
So, yeah, so, so, yes, so, again, just here today, again, asking for, again, a ten-year tax abatement on the new equipment that'll be coming, coming into the county. But, yes, it's a little, little out of sync despite all of their concern about confidentiality, and then they hit the wrong button on Friday, and everything was out across the wire, so...
John, who can talk a little bit about the equipment that they're going to bring in?
I can. My name is Mike Barnhill. I'm with American Landmaster, I'm Senior Director of Operations. We're going to be investing in a paint system that's going to be the large, largest portion of our initial investment. It's a powder coat system, and what we're investing in is a, it's an environmentally friendly system. Many powder coat systems use phosphates. We've chose to go with the zirconium process, which is environmental friendly, it's wastewater-friendly, and the sludge that comes out of the wash tanks is landfill-friendly. You can literally scoop it up and trash, trash containers. So that's, that's the largest investment. That's about a 1.2 million dollar investment on that piece. Into the future, we'll be looking at robotic welding machines, a lot of racks, shelving, potential conveyor lines, things like that. But, you know, I spoke to the biggest piece of the initial investment. There will be, our company is, is really looking to invest and grow. Our parent company is Baxter Enterprises. They have made a strong commitment to us to consolidate our operations. Right now, we operate in Roseland, Louisiana, Fort Wayne, Louisiana, headquartered in Fort Wayne. We're adding several engineers on product development, we're adding a stronger sales force, we're adding process engineering. So those are positions that are all new, that are going to be added to this business, not to mention the production employees that will be putting in place. So we're going to have fabrication with two bin, and maybe buying a few presses, powder coat line, and the assembly line. I have to pay about 112,000 square feet.
I noticed on your statement, it benefits on it, first time I had seen this in a while, and it's a question that I always ask, on it, about you being veteran-friendly in your hiring process. I see that you included veteran groups in your recruitment for employment.
Yeah. One of the things I sat down with our HR manager is, let's pull together a good recruiting plan. Where are we going to recruit from? One of, actually, one of our employees is a, is a former Marine, and it's all, it's all over his workstation, at his, at his desk, and I've even spoke with him to say, you know, what, where can we pull those resources from? I, I've been in this county before, I worked for Gator Cases, and when I sat, Work One had came in, and they had actually brought a veterans representative in with them. So I want to reach out to those, those groups and definitely encourage those groups to, to meet with our HR manager. If we can have specific events, you know, at a veterans center, that would be ideal. So we do have a desire to reach out to the veteran groups and bring veterans in, you know, they're hard-working people, very reliable. And I've got a gun, a gun home Marine that, that is, that has, we've actually done some work with wounded warriors and things like that. We try to donate our units, donate our time, invest in the community and the people around the area. So those are some of the things we're, you know, we're looking at doing, and Paul Baron is, is the, is the Marine that I work with. Veterans groups are definitely a group that we're wanting to reach out to and recruit from.
Thank you for your energy in the hiring process for veterans.
Yes.
What, what is a utility task vehicle? What type of vehicles are you building?
So it's like a Polaris, you know, with a dump bed on it. We have a two-seater, and we also have a crew cab with four seats. You'll see our units in Tractor Supplies, ProKings. So those are the big box stores, but we also sell to dealers as well. So there, we have a 350, which is a smaller engine, on up to a 750 engine, so, with four-wheel drive. So they're just the utility vehicles you see on farms, those types of vehicles. We also have go-carts as well.
What engine do you use?
What engine? Coler is our primary engine, we have a Honda engine, and we do have a Briggs engine on the units. But one other comment I want to say is that on the equipment that I am sourcing, as far as the paint system, it's going to be manufactured by a company out of Indiana, out of Mishawaka. That played a major part in my decision process, too.
Having gone through this with the redevelopment commission already, which we recommended it, I've got one, not yours, but I've got one. I wish I had one. But in lieu of that, I would recommend that we approve this tax waiver request.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have a resolution number?
2017-05.
2017-05. I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same.
Thank you very much.
Can't everybody sign that one? I'm anxious, do you need to sign in print?
Well, as soon as you're going down to be signed on it, John, it looks like you're up again.
Yeah, so this is a revisit of a, of an abatement that was previously approved. The, as you may recall, MetroMet, a fiber optic provider, had been in here requesting a 100% tax abatement for 10 years on their equipment, basically their fiber cable and routers and everything else that would go into providing fiber internet service at the time to the Tiff District and to the city. After considerable discussions with the city, the city decided not to go forward with the project. After further discussions with the company and the redevelopment commission, the company said that they would consider going ahead and building out the fiber in the Tiff District for essentially the same cost and that the county had committed to the redevelopment, with redevelopment and the, and the tax abatement. And redevelopment met last week, and again, approved to go, that to go forward. But as you recall, or may recall, the initial motion was that, that this was subject to the city doing the same thing, so putting their money in and, and doing their abatement. So I guess I'm back for a point of clarification more than anything, that is to say, asking for the, the same abatement that you had previously approved, albeit just to build out the fiber optic in the, in the Tiff area and not come into the city. This will be, again, primarily available to, to any place that makes sense where Northeastern REMC is the, is the electrical service provider, because the company's cooperating with, with the REMC on this. So although we talk about the Tiff District, they'll more than likely be able to cover all of the Gateway Industrial Park as well, since that's covered by Northeastern REMC. But again, this has been a big pain point for all of our businesses located in the Tiff District, and in fact, the folks from American Landmaster were just asking Dean about it earlier, what the possibilities were. So, again, you've already, I guess, already approved this, subject to the city doing the same thing, so what I'm asking is that you approve this project, the county piece of the project, and what the city does, the city does.
This has got the potential to spread throughout the county, doesn't it? I mean, they can tie into that, depending on how they're going to transfer, get it around, but...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's... with, with the REMC on this. So although we talk about the Tiff District, they'll more than likely be able to cover all of the Gateway Industrial Park as well, since that's covered by Northeastern REMC. But again, this has been a big pain point for all of our businesses located in the Tiff District. And in fact, the, the folks from American Landmaster were just asking Dean about it earlier, what the possibilities were. So again, you've already, I guess, already approved this, subject to the, the city doing the same thing. So what I'm asking is, is that you approve this project, the county piece of the project, and what the city does, the city does.
This has got the potential to spread throughout the county, doesn't it? I mean, they can tie into that, and depending on how they're going to transfer, get it around.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, it's important to logistics, you know, not only the logistics, but, but the manufacturing as well. So Gator Cases, for instance, has been very, is asked on a regular basis about this, because they have operations in both Florida and here in Columbia City, and they've got, you know, just-in-time delivery with Sweetwater. But they have to get all of their information to Florida and back, and then, you know, get the product down the road to Sweetwater. And just given their current speeds and expense, it's just, I just chewing them up. And everybody else, I mean, out there is asked as well, just in varying degrees.
Bill, isn't this something we develop, not can't pay for, pay for? And then if it goes farther out of the Tiff District, then they could come back to the council and we could look at it.
I don't know for sure, to tell you the truth. Good or not, that's something we've got to look at. Do you know, have any idea?
I think we've already approved that for the $300,000.
For the $300,000.
Right, through redevelopment. So there'd be no cost to County General. It's just redevelopment because of it being in the Tiff area is willing to take care of that.
But I don't think the idea that it's going to spread in to the county for your normal house-to-house use is probably going to happen, just because of the fact of the revenue that they can, that they're going to make from putting that, those lines around.
In fact, we asked them about that, and they said it'd be some time before that would happen.
To me, it's kind of an anchor, where you can spread out from it. Or is that the county's tied into it? All we have to do is figure out how to get it to replace ours.
The good thing is they're working with REMC, and so wherever REMC is, it's going to be easy for them to get to those areas. They're going to be working on higher, higher population areas, like the Lake Area, Lincoln Point, excuse me.
Anything close to a substation, if I recall right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going up to New School, will they be, will they have access to that or not?
The school decided to go with a different internet provider. So they signed like a three-year contract. And that was another thing that kind of threw this into disarray a little bit. I don't know. Dean, Dean Avey is here for Metro. I mean, if you have any, not to put Dean on the spot, but, but specific questions, I mean, that's, that's why he's here.
John, I missed a preliminary meeting where this was approved on it. Can you tell me why Columbia City opted out?
I think the, the biggest, the biggest point for them was that, that MediaCom, once they got wind of this, came in and said, well, you know, we can, we can upgrade our service within the city. And oh, by the way, we've got plans to do that this summer. And that's fine, but it's, it's still coax cable. It's, it's, you know, even, even if the download speed is fast, the upload speed is considerably slower. So it's not the same up and down.
It's not getting the same service.
Right, right. Completely different technology that's not, not nearly as good. So I think, I think the city just took the approach of, well, let's see what happens, and, you know, we can always come back to this at some point in the future.
Jump on if it's, if it's successful.
Right.
I think it's something that's necessary to be done. And shame on the city for not joining up, but you need a motion to take that out of the original, the city sheriff.
I think, I think we need to amend the original motion and go with that direction.
I make a motion we do that, that we go ahead with what we've agreed to, but drop the city's contribution.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second. Have any additional discussion?
I, I have another question for the gentleman, if I could. Can you explain maybe to us a little bit on what your company's plan would be to get out to the general public or to the individual homeowner?
Sure. Well, one of the gentlemen's was very correct. One of our initial concerns, really coming to it, the counties, and we've done this in almost every region we go to, the biggest hurdle is getting into the county. How do you create that foundation that we can then spur off of into other areas? So right now, the biggest need is really in that east quarter. I've had a lot of discussion and need for, for connectivity in that area. The great thing is, once we get here, once that investment is made, there are short hops to other areas that may have needs also. So we're very open to that. One of your neighbors started the exact same way, coming into the center of the city. And as conversations came on, on different areas of growth, the new business districts, we're able to work hand-in-hand with them to grow to the different areas. I think today, the investment MetroNet has made in Wapah, grew to, I think, about $15 million. So that's how those relationships really grow. And talk to the mayor, that he'll be able to speak to how that, that initial foundation coming into the city easily, and the county grew to other areas. So we look for a couple of things. Is there, you know, is there a need in the area? Is there enough concentration that it's worth the investment to go to those areas? You know, we've always worked, if, if there is a need, let's say you build a new business park in a different part of the county, you know, we work to see what's the need, and in ways we can partner with the county to bring fiber there, too. So it's a very kind of hand-in-hand close relationships that we have.
So just because REMC runs a line out to a customer in a certain area, doesn't mean that you'll ever get there? If it was, if it wouldn't be profitable for you to go down a, a route that wouldn't provide enough customers for you, then that, you wouldn't go there.
You're talking about RMC from a power state?
No, from, yeah, where RMC has their network in place that you guys are going to piggyback on as far as using their equipment. If they ran, if they ran to a certain part of the county that was, that was low population, that doesn't necessarily mean that you guys would ever get there if the, if the, if the potential income for you wouldn't, wouldn't be there.
So if, if we go to an area, say they've got a substation a couple of miles out to the county, and we've worked with them to bring fiber to that area, that goes that much further to really covering that cost to go to a residential area, then it's, it's tough to know right now about seeing what the densities are. But we offer what are called metro zones, which if there is a residential area and we're very close, we'll, we'll offer the ability to pre-sign up for service. And if there's a certain threshold that's met, which means there is a need and demand, then so it actually puts that, that ownership into the people's hands to say, if you really do want fiber, there's no commitment, just say, we are interested and we'll bring fiber to that area. Very active in creating metrics. I'll set up a triple before.
Thank you. I notice you are not going to be required for any additional employees for this project?
I'm sorry?
You, you are not going to be hiring additional employees to complete this?
No, not for this specific bill. We already have crews all throughout northern Indiana, Fort Wayne, Wabash, Huntington, Warsaw. So they'll be doing a lot of the work to contract and build out. A lot of this is very capital expensive, capital, capex heavy. So a lot of those will be crews that we currently have to come here and set it up with, and customers.
One question I always ask about a tax abatement. Have you been veteran friendly in your hiring process in the past?
Yeah, very, very good question. Yeah, we have. We do leverage a lot of veterans when it comes to project management. A lot of the staff either work with our crews or out of the Evansville office. So we are very veteran.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. We have discussion. Any additional discussion? Those in favor of the motion signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same.
Was there a resolution for this one or no?
They already signed the resolution, but there was no.
Okay, okay. So just, just.
Just an amendment?
But we may have to rework some of the, the SB 1. I think there was something that needed to be changed on that, that I can get that figured out.
Sounds good. If you want to, just sign in print.
That's not the first time that the county has taken the initiative to get something done out there without the city. The silver water, all the stuff that's out there, the county's pretty much been pretty much responsible for doing it. I think this is in addition to that, to me.
Scott Wagner, I believe you are next.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Since taking over our daily operations, the Health Department thought it'd be a good idea to rebrand the Health Department, produce a annual report for everyone to see. I will have to apologize to Council on Banks. His name today is Matt instead of Chad. I don't know how that happened, but I don't know your identity if you wish. See anything else in there that's there? I just want to present to you. You can look at that at your own time if you wish. If you have any questions, you can feel free to call the Health Department. But I wanted to let you see what we're doing every day and what we do throughout the year, so that you're more aware of what we can do for you or what we can do for the county. Any questions from you?
What determines who serves on the Board of Health? Statute?
There is a statute on political, either Democrat or Republican, you have to have a board of three split on that. We do have to have at least one physician, a couple of other different things. A nurse might be a hospital administrator. So the state code spells that up pretty well, but then the commissioners have to lap that.
So you got the diversion board. I mean, you got veterinarian included, and downed, and medical doctors, nursing, and side shelters.
You're going to be in the office after the meeting?
I can.
Received a complaint of some additional pumping on the Anderson Road.
I'm going to go out there, actually, right after this.
John, it already, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Have a question, Buzz, though?
Thanks, Scott.
Followed lead.
Good morning.
So we, I just asked you to put it in the agenda to follow up and see if any questions about the report that we have prepared for you. I, so I'm just here to sit aside.
Put her on the spot.
Right.
A question I had is, you proposed that the county pick up the utility bills on the building out there. How are those paid for now?
We pay for them on user fees. This is where we're at. I just wanted to put that out there. I know you're just going to start looking at budgets. Where we're at as far as our overall operating budget is, if the state, we asked for additional funds to the state. We were awarded additional funds, not everything we asked for. But we knew going into grant, grant season that used fees no longer support, just the overall increase with benefits each year. So we asked for additional funding from the state, we were awarded additional funding, not all of it. So now I need to go back to the Executive Committee and say, you know, if I can't secure additional funding resources from other places, what services are we going to either eliminate or reduce with the agency? So I just kind of want to go see if that was a possibility. Reach out to everyone who may, you know, want to help us out. But if not, then we'll have to make cuts.
My first reaction would be to try to get other sources.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm going to try. And we just, we did get an allocation of another grant from the Judicial and that was the Office of Court Services, I think the chief or may have been, Center said. There's another grant, so we're going to, we'll keep writing. And hopefully by budget time, I'll have more information for you. But just if you had a little extra pot of gold sitting there, I'd like to consider for. But I, I know, you know, I've been holding up that, I know you don't have extra money, but if something would happen that there is money, I'd like to be considered.
One thing that's happened this year, the legislature took away.
I was looking for your.
Personal property taxes, you know, I don't know where the cap's at, is it $200,000? I don't know where it's at.
$20,000.
Well, anyway, we're, we stand to lose about 1.7% or in dollars, $135,000, $140,000 of revenue that's going to be gone.
That's going to put you in the head.
And we are going to, another thing we're doing is we're going to, and I understand that. I, I folded fun, all right, in this part of the budget. We're going to be more aggressive on our collection of money. You know, for many years, we could, we, we knew, you know, we could go case by case and work with individuals, you know, as far as collections. But unfortunately, for me, we probably have to start running it more like a business and, you know, be more firm as far as collections. And not that against that, it's just, you know, I, I appreciate the way we've been able to, you know, run the program and been successful that way. But the time has come, if we want to continue to offer the level of service that we do, we're going to have to be more aggressive in say, you know, you know, prior to entering the program, you have to have a week in advance paid. So our staff has been working and brainstorming ideas of how we can do a better job collecting fees prior to their release. So I'm going to present that to our Executive Committee next week for approval. But I, I know, you know, I understand where you're at. I just wanted to get my letter out there.
Having not been. And you're going to be presenting this at our budget time?
Yes, yes. And as soon as, actually, I'll probably get on your agenda before your official budget. We received our grant award letter yesterday, so they want my amended budget by May 19th back at the state. So if they approve that, I'll probably try to get in here in June, but that's probably when you start budget, isn't it? You start budget reviews in June for July.
Probably started in July.
So I'll try to get on the agenda in June with the budgets been approved by the state, and then you can give me direction of what information you want for budget session.
Yeah.
If that works.
Having not been through the budget process before, is utilities something that's usually taken out of a department's budget, or does that come out of, like, County General?
That's usually through the maintenance budget.
Through the maintenance budget. So this facility would be different than the rest of the counties?
I think it has been.
Have any questions for Paula or Leanne? Got off easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
I went too hard recently, yeah.
You got a phone for a while, you got an accent.
George, Commissioner's report.
Okay, we don't have a lot for the Commissioners. We had our meeting yesterday. We gave a favorable pass for the jail tiller. We had Deb Dar from Whitley Transit give us a quarterly report. State Board of Accounts is now requiring that the Commissioners to approve the quarterly report of Whitley Transit, since it's federal monies, it's grant monies. We approve that. Paula made her pitch to, with the financial report overview. We had Randy Kokelin for EMS Services, a discussion. Scott Wagner, Nathan Bilger, we tightened up the zoning code amendment for the CAFOs, ACFOs, just to, to take the gray area out of it. There was a little bit of a gray area in our zoning. So that's a number of animals per acre is what we were dealing with. And then Brandon gave us a, an update on the roads and what his plan is for the next year. And he gave us a plan whether, and we're not sure how much money we're going to get from the, from the state. So he gave us an 80, 90, and a 100-mile plan to, to let us know what roads were a priority for him. And if you'd like to see that, we have that in the office, in the Council of Commissioners' office. And so that was, it's nice to have a plan for the year. He also has a five-year plan, because the state is requiring us to have a five-year plan for certain monies that we need. And we have to have a Pazer program, which is, Brandon has gone through every mile of the county roads now, and we have to rate every one of our roads. And so that's finally done. He's got that done, and he has that report also. The only other thing we've got is the bridge inspection contract will be coming up this year.
That's kind of interesting, too, that they want us to rate for the roads, because that is subject to the person doing the rating. It's kind of a.
Well, I think where we owe Brandon a big thanks is, this came about a year ago with this crossroads community funding, that you wouldn't, you wouldn't get any of that if you didn't have your roads rated. And, and we were besieged, I don't know if you guys were ever besieged, we were besieged with companies wanting to come in and do it for $30,000 or $40,000. And, and Brandon, yeah, I know it costs some time, but Brandon and Kevin, he essentially drove every mile of this county and did it themselves. So we always.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't, I don't mean to take away from that.
No.
My point being is, though, it's like, and this will be something, maybe, something that you can relate to, is like asking somebody, what is your pain level? Well, it depends on what they, what they have experienced.
Well, I think there's set criteria. I don't, I don't think it's that easy. I don't think, yeah, I like that or I don't like that. I, I do believe there's set criteria.
I see. I see.
And this mandate from the state didn't say it had to be right, it just had to be done.
Well, that's my point. That was my point.
That was goofy thing.
I think another good thing that comes from that is that Brandon and Kevin were probably on roads that they may never have seen before, and they've had the opportunity to be all over the county and see even the minor secondary roads.
That's a good point.
And he sat here and said that, as many roads as he's traveled, he saw some that he had never seen before.
Well, and they took, they went with their drivers to the territory, so the driver went through with them, and the other guys really know those roads, I think, so they got advice from them, too, which was good.
Backtrack a little bit on something that George said. So you want to elaborate a little bit on how the Senior Citizens Board works and the fact that they got a CPA that goes through the billing and everything?
So it's just going to be a new addition to. Yeah, well, recently, as, just this last year, we actually changed our structure. We had been set up before with a, not only with a Board of Directors, but also with corporation officers, and they, and they were, a lot of the services that we, those two boards did seemed to be redundant. So after having several meetings with John Whiteleather and at his recommendation, we consolidated it and kept our Board of Directors, and then had the Board of Directors elect the corporation officers from that body. So the, both groups are still in place, only there's only, or only the people that are on the Board of Directors can also be on the corp, as corporation officers.
And also along with that, and one of the members of CPA and goes through the claims fairly thoroughly prior to them getting here?
Currently, we are very fortunate to have Dwayne Jensen involved with our, with our organization as a volunteer. He is the, he is on the corporation board, and he is a retired CPA, owned his own business in Florida, was originally from this area, retired, retired from owning a business in Florida and moved back to Columbia City. So usually the people go in the other direction, but, so we are very fortunate to have him, and he has helped us immensely as far as not only accounting and record keeping, but as far as grants and monies that are available to us and just procedural. We just recently went through a, an audit that we had not had an audit in, well, we'd never had an audit out there. So we just recently went through our first audit, which I think you guys were given a copy of, and we got a favorable approval with a few things that needed, that we were counseled on that were very minor and that have been corrected. So he's been on top of that for us, and it's been a very, it's been a great relationship, and I hope he sticks with us.
Very sharp man, isn't he?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Off, George.
Yeah, a couple more things. Another thing we talked about was comprehensive, comprehensive plan with the school coming in, and with the comprehensive plan being over five years old, that we decided to either amend, to start looking into the new comprehensive plan on what we need to do for planning for our community, for the county, and so Nathan Bilger was asked to look into that to, for the cost of what that would be and to go forward with that. With the county being in a growth mode like we are with businesses, residences, we need to do that. Normally that's done within a five to 10-year period. Also, Commissioners are looking at an HSA program for our health insurance. It's a program that most businesses are going towards, and most counties are going to that. The county, or the city has an HSA, which is a health savings account, and that the county would provide X amount of dollars for, each year for a credit card, which the employees would use, they could use it for wellness, but they control their own account on that. So instead of going to emergency rooms, they're going to start going to the clinics to make sure that, you know, that it just controls cost. And it'll take us away from a self-funded insurance and take a lot of the liability away from the county on issues like we had before. Great program, and I think everybody's going to be happy with that, but we are looking at that. Then I have, the Commissioners also approved at your last meeting, one of the salary ordinances for HR Director, and we have two other salary ordinances that we've given a favorable pass. All three physicians have had additional duties added to their job description, all three positions, the job descriptions have been reviewed and approved by department heads, elected officials, and they've been factored and approved by the Personnel Committee. They've received a favorable pass for the Commissioners, and only one will increase County General in the amount of $7,417. And I think you've got a packet on that. So we're asking for, first one we're looking at is, again, for the Council to look at salary ordinance for the Human Resource Director. Commissioners, knowing that we don't have that kind of money in the budget right now for, for 2017, have approved using CEDUP funds, which we'll be bringing before you, and we're asking that you approve the salary going from $49,329 to $58,262, and that is, most department heads are in that salary range.
At the last meeting that came before us, I made a motion to grant that, and I never got a second. And hopefully, I'm going to make that motion again that we approve it, and I hope I get a second so we can give some real discussion on it, because we didn't, we, the discussion turned to the system we use, and that really wasn't the issue. If the system is not good, then we need to change it, but that's the system that we've been living with for years, and if it was good then, it's good now, we can't change it without, I don't think, without changing the system.
And that's one thing.
The Commissioners never got, and really a response of why we didn't approve it. I don't think we had a good discussion on that particular issue, and the issue with the system is, to me, is another subject.
As far as the system, you know, we're looking at that. We've received three quotes from other resources, we've got it narrowed down to one, and that process would include the review of a job description, a new factoring system, an agency to factor all the updated and new job descriptions, and that will be presented to the Personnel Committee for review. And then it would come to Council.
I'm going to, I'm going to second Bill's motion so we can open it up for discussion.
If we had a different system, that doesn't assure it would change what the outcome, it could be the other way. I think the average for an HR person in this general area is about $70,000.
Yeah, you're looking at between $70,000 and $80,000.
I'd like to start with this discussion. When and how did this go from, Pam was hired in as coordinator, I believe it was official term of termality? When did it go from that to an HR person? And how did that happen?
Well, to be honest about it, with her experience level, most of our department heads go to Pam for HR, her HR experience. We used to depend on our attorney for a lot of this, and we were paying one way or another, but she does a lot of the hiring, the firing. We had, we've just got an issue right now where we've got somebody with an EOC suit that's going against us, and the attorneys have looked at that, and with, with all the documentation that we have, she has documentation for everything, and that suit will not go forward because of the documentation that we have. If we didn't have that, if we didn't have the experience in that job, whether it be Pam or whoever, I don't care, but that experience is needed to keep us from lawsuits. There are so many different, ACA is another one, the Affordable Care Act has caused a lot of issues as far as documentation, and I think Jana can tell you that, that it's for her department, too. It's just been a lot of more documentation, regulations, restrictions.
If I could help answer your question, she was HR when she came here.
We didn't have any, we were hiring a coordinator. What she was before was not relevant to the job.
Okay, but she, but she had that, she had that ability, and she could do that, do that job. So we, yeah, we did expand it from there. Now, you know, of the Council and the Commissioners, ten of us sitting here, how many have come from a work atmosphere in which you had an HR person? How many? Okay? And so I understand that, and there was some reluctance from previous Commissioners because they didn't have any HR experience, but it's a tremendous safety zone for Whitley County, having a person there. And quite frankly, I wasn't, I was around when, when the county coordinators started. I was around then, but let's look at why it was started. It was started because they needed a secretary. Now, am I wrong? You guys have been here longer? They need somebody who can type letters and answer phones and greet people?
But they also, they also documented a lot of things and stayed on top of a lot of things at that time.
Not like we do now.
Well, they probably did by virtue of the job, but I think, I think your county auditor had to do a lot of that.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, isn't that essentially the auditor's responsibility? If you don't hire someone as a, as a coordinator, isn't that, doesn't the auditor, isn't the auditor required to do that job?
By state code, yeah.
Well, research I've done is, very few counties our size have either one, a coordinator or a HR person, and even some much larger counties don't have one. I mean, that's not, that's not the norm across the state that everybody's got one. I'm not saying we don't need a coordinator or whatever, but I'm just saying that I don't think that's the norm.
Jim, I don't have the documentation with me, but there, the counties around us.
I've done some.
Good.
I've worked on it, and a lot of counties don't even have an HR.
But they're probably using legal counsel on.
And that's what we're up to. And George, just to take that conversation just a little bit further, number one, there's 48 of 92 counties have less than 35,000 population, this is a matter of record, and those counties that are similar in size to us, here's one, Clinton County, has 32,609 population, and they're paying a person $32,055.64. Another one.
Look at Huntington.
Well, we'll in a minute, but right here, another one I'm looking at is Randolph County. They're paying less than we are. Wabash County is paying less than we are, and then Huntington County with more population is paying $43,154.33. And Cass County with 38,000 is paying $35,910. So we're paying.
But, but does that also tell that they've got assistants that work with them? You know, a lot of them have.
It just tells what they're paying, but that's.
A lot of them have two or three people underneath those.
Well, I don't, I don't have that information, but I'm just saying, going by the salaries of, of whether they're called HR or coordinator, those are the salaries.
Yeah. Pam just gave me this. Wabash County pays $45,000, their population between 30 and 35,000. Shelby County is 58,000, Huntington County is 42,000, and I believe that they've got an assistant also.
And we're paying 47,000, so we're paying more than they are, and they're bigger than we are.
But they've got an assistant also.
And an assistant, yeah.
Cosiasko, 78,000, and Allen County, which I, we really can't, but they're 79,000. But, you know, the average wage, if you average that out, is 58,000.
Who'd you just mention? Allen, did you mention?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that's comparing.
Well, no, I, no.
And he said.
Can I speak? Let's check.
Yeah, would you please, Mark?
Coming from the experience and what I lean on Pam for, recently she's done an EEOC. Whether that's in statute for supposed to be Jana's job or whose job that is, I don't know. I personally don't care what we call her job as a coordinator, a human resource. Pam gets leaned on so much for our first injuries, and you guys all know my department, we get first injuries more than any department. Family Medical Leave Act, that's who we call. And over the years, we've, I've sat here enough, we try not to compare jobs with other counties. That's been brought up before, let's not do it, because some people are paid way beyond what other counties are. Some people are paid way below. I think we need to invest in Pam, she's been here and has helped. I know I'm coming, I'm bringing two others, I'm going to try not to speak on them because they're my employees and I have a, you know, I have more of a true loyalty to them. But without Pam, I'll be honest, Sheriff's Department would be lost. Whether those get dictated to somebody else, whether it would be Jana, I don't know what kind of time Jana has if she can handle the Sheriff's Department's issues in all three divisions, but I think it's a good investment for Whitley County. I'm sorry if you guys think it's too high. I believe from what we've looked at and factored with all the other jobs, I don't know of another job that wasn't approved when it was in here.
Well, the important thing is, Mark, this is what's important, to have the conversations so that, so that you can make a good evaluation. You know, we have to, we have to represent our constituents, and we have to try to maintain return money that might have mean something. So it's good, it's good to have a conversation.
I hope you can somehow find it, I know money's tight and everything in the county. Everything we do, you guys have to fight for to get the money. But I'm just saying, I think we've invested in Pam enough that, I would hate to lose her and start from ground zero or have all her duties delegated to her.
Well, that's the reason I brought it up again, is to get this discussion. But still get back to the thing that we live under a system, we have granted raises consistently based on what had been recommended by the committee, we got set up to do that, that's the system we use. And under the system we use, this is what you came back with.
Personally speaking, this is my, and maybe it's because of my age, you know, if my first job, I worked hard for 80 cents an hour, but you know how far 80 cents an hour goes, but...
Can I interrupt you a minute?
Sure.
Is there any way that we could, somebody could ask the construction to stop over here until after the meeting? It's.
Yeah, draws your attention away, doesn't it?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Glenn.
No, it's fine. I lost my train of the short one anyway, I guess.
80 cents an hour.
Yeah. It's just, it seems, it seems, our wage scale is, in my opinion, we pay our employees pretty well.
I think we need to. I mean, we, we get companies coming in that have just been there, we want them to be paying at least the county average income. We don't entirely, we're getting there, but we're talking about both sides of the money.
If we, if we're not there, we should have been, because I sat on that, on that board for a while, and.
We're getting close.
We should be there.
Yeah. But let's still get back to the system.
Having been here a while, and I've watched, I've watched this county coordinator, human resource person evolve from Paula to Amy to now Pam on it, it appears to me that that particular position has involved into a considerable amount of work on it, simply because of the edicts that come down, as an example of your Americans Disability Act, et cetera down through, and I think that Pam has done an excellent job on this, keeping the county updated, anything that needs to be changed, she comes around and gets it changed on it, and I personally am in favor of increasing her wages on it.
I'd like to point out, it's not just Pam, if Pam left tomorrow, we'd have to replace her.
And I can't tell you that all three Commissioners are very strongly in favor of this because it's. And I can't tell you that all three commissioners are very strongly in favor of this because it's, you know, we, we deal with it every day. We know what's, what's has to be done. And if it wasn't for that position, I don't know what we'd do. We'd have to have some legal counsel here all the time.
No matter how this vote turns out, I would like to go on the record, she has, she is a very good employee. So, I, I want, I want to say that out front. Really appreciate what you do for us.
Well, I know I had a discussion, or I'd like to share the discussion that I had with George yesterday. And I guess my thought is maybe we are to the point to where we need to have Pam or the position of a, and, and make it a position of an HR person. And separate from that, the administrative duties that she does for the commissioners. And assign those duties back to the auditor if that is where they're supposed to be. And then let's do a evaluation through the personnel committee on the HR position. And if it grades out at that pay rate, I would support that a hundred percent. And if then, you know, we've talked about this part-time person. If it gets to the point to where the auditor cannot handle the point for the commissioners, then let's reevaluate and consider at that time bringing somebody on board that you guys would have as a resource in that position rather than piling too much on what we're expecting out of a county coordinator, HR position, all in one. Because from what's been shared with me, that the caseload and the job load of those two positions together are high enough that we're considering another position entirely. So, maybe it's time that we, that we make a new HR position.
Do we, do, do we know, is your caseload more than what you can probably do or, I'm just asking, you know?
She's in here at seven-thirty in the morning.
I'd like to get back, excuse me. I'd like to get back a little bit what Bill said about the system. And I sit on the personnel committee. And Bill, sometimes you, you just, if you stay so long on something, you're going to be outdated. And I feel that's where we're at with the personnel committee.
I don't disagree.
I don't care what you say. My problem is, is, is the refactoring of the personnel committee. What their duty is, is to refactor somebody with the, with the job description that's brought forth in front of us. Now, whether we refactor that, now just because it comes out on that other end, high or low, don't necessarily mean that everybody sits on that factoring committee story. I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. The, the bad thing about that refactoring committee is that it's very easy. Whoever writes a job description, it's very easy to get a raise.
Did we just discover that at this, this?
No, it's been going on. I made that comment several times in the refactoring committee. You can ask Mark, Mark Becker, who we serve a lot of times, says this thing's getting out of hand. And it's, I feel that, you know, if we're going to do it, then somebody else needs to write the job description that maybe is neutral. I don't know, but there's got to be a different way. It worked in the past, I understand that, but I just don't think it's working now. That's my personal opinion.
I don't particularly disagree with you, but I'm just saying that's two different issues.
And I guess that's my concern, is that is a different issue, but, you know, commissioners are dealing with that right now. That's, you know, we pretty well come to the conclusion of, you know, we've got another service that is a good service. REMC is using them, other, other government entities are using them. But I guess what, what I'm asking right now, are you asking that, that we hold back on anything that comes through the personnel committee at this point?
Yeah, that's another thing. We've got two more of them to address.
We've got two more coming up here.
Well, George, it's, when Pam spoke recently out at the library to a group, was that part of the county, part of county business or what was that?
She does do some of that with, with, she's got an HR group that she works with. And I think she's a member of Whitley Transit Board. But she's usually working with the city on, on a lot of issues.
We've had a considerable discussion. Do we have any additional discussion?
Well, only that I'm going to ask that. We haven't taken an absolute vote, but I think I know a consensus. With regard to this second person, I don't want that to really enter in here because I don't think there's support between us for a second person, so I don't want that really to enter. I, I, I do absolutely support the fact that Pam should, should get the pay increase, but, and I told it to her face, I can't support this second person right now. Part-time, full-time, I don't care what it is, I just, not right now.
I made two motions in the last meeting. The first one was to approve both of them. And that didn't get a second. So, the second line, I just did for the HR person. And that's what I'm bringing up today, re, making a motion out of the day is.
Yes.
And I'd like to clarify that the job title is Human Resource Director that we're dealing with. So, so if we approve this, what you're telling me is it's going to be an HR job and everything that's not related to HR is going to be put back to the auditor?
Yeah, or are you separating?
Well. I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah.
Everything she does is HR. I don't.
Okay, yeah.
I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't know if think you can draw a line if I do.
Jana does everything that she needs to do, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know how you feel about it, but.
I just, I mean, like, like Thor said, you know, by state statute, I, you know, I technically am your secretary, so, I don't know. I do, you know, I do the minutes and everything and the agenda. But, I don't know, I think, I don't, I don't know. I just, I.
I just have one final question. Why, what, what did you take into consideration to make that, make that retroactive back to January one?
Is that the motion?
Yeah, we started that process.
Yeah, I guess just because we started the process, really. I mean.
So, is that what the motion is, though? I guess that's what I'm asking. That it's retroactive.
That's up to council.
I was doing the due duties for that home, plus we started this process, this process of personnel.
If the council would approve that without going back to January one, then I'd change the motion to that, I guess. But that doesn't cost any, anything out of the general fund. The commissioners have said they'll pick that up from their seated monies, which, so, and I, and I think that's a good thing. But I also, I, I just think that we need that job. I'm not talking about Pam, although I agree, but I think that job. And, and it was talking about putting things back to the auditor. I'm not exactly sure what the auditor's job is entirely. I don't know if it would encompass the things that she does now. She's secretary to the council and commissioners. And those are the auditor duties, but what are those that, that you're doing that she should be doing? Do you have any idea?
I mean, I don't know everything that Pam does, so, but I just know that, like, there's been a couple of times where her and I have spoken. You know, I always talk about her huge caseload. Well, I, I just want to make sure that, like, I know she does some stuff for department heads. Well, I do think that, you know, the department heads need to be doing those things. You know, that would take some off of her that, you know, that she wouldn't need to, because she doesn't need to necessarily do those things because they can do them. Like payroll change notices and stuff like that. She's a great help, but I do think that they need to, I do think the department heads need to start taking back some of those responsibilities that they've put on her.
That's the whole purpose of being a head.
Pam, your background is in HR. So, I guess I would ask you, what tasks do you perform for the commissioners that are not an HR task?
Right now, there's nothing. I'm not performing any HR tasks. The auditor does the minutes.
Or, or for anyone in the county?
I, I do department head for HR, for all the department tasks. Discipline, anything to do with employees, benefits, I'm compliant, a lot of compliance, a lot for the ACA.
So, what did our, what did our county coordinator do before we had any HR responsibility in the position?
Well, type letters for the commissioners.
Yeah, front office.
I mean, there's, there's, there's no way to, to say this without sounding different, but quite frankly, our predecessor commissioners really came in on the first and third Mondays to do the job. They weren't here. This group of guys, and I'm just telling you, this group of guys spends a lot of time in this building. And we do our own memo. I, I can type, I can do the memo things. But I guess, I guess me personally, I rely on her for HR issues. I don't rely on her. There, you asked about one job. There is one job, I guarantee there is one job that, that can be taken away from her because I don't know why she does it anyway. And that's scheduling the rooms in this bus, in this building. They don't schedule rooms, but that's really, I was sitting here trying to think of what, what does she do that a normal HR person wouldn't do? And, and I think it's scheduled rooms. And that's a kind of a big deal because these rooms are busy all the time.
And the courthouse, there's more ones and all that scheduling.
I think the, the more time spent here, the more appreciative you become of her, really, that she does.
We've had a lot of discussion about this. Any additional discussion? Bill, would you repeat your motion so that we know what we're going to vote on?
I will. I will. I'd make the move that we approve the request for, for the HR person only. Secondary one.
That's retroactive back to January.
Seated money to go back to January one, starting now.
Going back to January? You say not going back to January?
Not going back to January.
Starting at this point here. And I will second that as I had previous. Any discussion about the current motion? All those in favor signify by your right hand. Vote as you say.
George. I felt slighted by this group in the past, but I've never, ever felt more slighted than I have right now. I just don't think.
We, we don't take things lightly. I mean, it's.
You guys are amazing here.
Just let me say something, Don. Sit down. Through the years, we've had a very excellent relationship with commissioners and council. It's a collaborative situation. You need us, we need you, and we've had great. With the current board, and I'm going back a year or two, that, there's kind of a wedge been pushed down in there. And every time you keep Tom on it, it just kind of keeps bringing it like this. You committed to twenty-five thousand dollars out to the YMCA, never talked with us about it. Come in here and thought we supposed to just jump to your, right on the bandwagon with you. That, in years past, that would have been discussed a little bit and asked for a little bit of input before the thing happened. That's just one issue. So, there's other issues that come along. You don't discuss anything with us, ask for any input on anything anymore. That's just kind of going to the wayside. And we've had good relationships. And I think now we've got, for the most part, pretty good relationships, but it's not excellent. And I think we've had pretty good, but there's just kind of a little bit of a wedge there that, that I think you people have, have pushed down here between us. And it just kind of keeps widening as things go. You don't console us on anything. You just kind of go ahead and come in and say, well, here's the way it is. And the health insurance was another issue. I have no problem with what you did. I, I think I got better coverage than I had. But I would have appreciated that that discussion kind of took place. And we had a little input and discussion before you just announced that, hey, January or December thirty-first, you're off the plan. So, there's just a couple of issues and there's others. So, while you want to take us to task, I'm just going to let you have a little bit of art my thong on the situation.
And I appreciate it, and I appreciate it. But how are we supposed to maintain this dialogue with you guys? How many, not counting Thor and Chad, how many of you attended more than two commissioner meetings last year?
I attended one yesterday, but I don't come normally. But how many do you come to ours, other than the chairman come?
Chairman, every meeting.
The chairman comes.
Chairman, every meeting, unless there's something going on.
Well, I don't think this is the place for us to air our dirty laundry, but I just, I just kind of.
All I want to know is how do you want us, because I agree with you. George and I have talked about this before. It's very hard to have a meeting on Monday and bring stuff to you on Tuesday. You had no clue.
I'll be right when he was chairman. He brought things up and he asked for some input and a lot of decisions are yours, they're not ours. And I appreciate your decisions, that you make them decisions. But there are some things that involve us and our collaboration to prove it, that we ought to have a little bit of input in what's said about it.
And I agree. I totally agree. I just don't know how to do it. And, and you guys will, will work with us.
It's, it's hard, it's hard for us. It's hard for me, honestly, personally for me. It's hard for me to be prepared for a Tuesday meeting, like you said, for a Monday meeting when I'm getting my packet on Friday. Something there has to change in my mind. Whether we explain to our department heads that they've got a deadline to meet as far as having things set for our agenda and we stick to that deadline. I would like to see the packet two weeks in advance. It's hard to do homework on issues that you're not familiar with coming up. There are some issues that are repetitive, that come back and, or that are an ongoing thing. That's, that's on me. But when I don't get my packet till Friday because of the deadlines that we have set, that makes my job almost impossible and very difficult. I would like to see that process changed where we set a deadline at least two weeks before the next meeting. And if you don't make that deadline, then you wait until the following month.
Yeah, I concur. There's times when maybe you like to do a little legwork yourself, to, you know, to check things out a little bit.
There's no argument for me. Just a reminder, and I am not knocking Jana down.
No, I'm not either.
We get our packet on Friday before the Monday meeting, so I, I get it. I get it.
I think also that the council members need to make an effort to find out what's coming up.
We can't debate everything in a meeting.
No.
You, you've got to come in. You, as, as council, have got to come in and make an effort to find out what we're doing. We try, we're here.
Well, we used to get minutes at the commissioner meetings for one thing, which we don't, we haven't for several years, but we always had to commit, we always had to.
They're available, they're available on the website.
Used to be part of our packet.
But pretty unusual. I stop in here now and then, pretty unusual to stop here and there's not a commissioner present, at least one.
I concur with that. I've seen that.
So, anybody, I think we have an obligation to talk to them, find out what's, what's coming up. What are they talking about?
Yeah, and I appreciate George talking about this thing over here next door before it ever happened. I mean, we. I mean, we, he kind of showed me over there one day what they was going to do, and I was happy to see that.
I'd like to ask you a question, Jim. Is it because of failing relationships that you do this job, that you could have a superior salary? Are you thinking about...
No, I'm not at all. I'm taking it off the fact that I've looked at these other, what they pay these other counties at our size, and I just think that you're at the top, you're above them all right now.
No, not according to wage information, 2016 wage information.
Well, we've got it, we've got it right here. You're paid higher than most counties our size.
So is one of the results of your conflict with the Commissioner.
I think you should go back through the minutes of past meetings. When these things come appearing down here after we've started the year, this is something that should, I think, should have been discussed. If it was going to be January 1st, 2017, that should have been brought up at budget time.
Yeah, I agree.
That we should have been working on that, and put that in the budget, not come in here four months later and think we're supposed to change everything around. You've been doing that job long enough that if it was leaning towards what we're talking about now, that should have been brought up last July, or August, or September, when we adopted the budget, and we could have...
What we brought to you hasn't been changed from the process we've been using for the last 10 years?
Pardon me?
What we brought up to you today has not changed in the last 10 years of the same process. You've had jobs come to you before, and in the year, I think, for five years, and changed them and approved them.
Go, Janet, see how many I voted for. No, that doesn't do anything with you. I appreciate the job you do, and I think you do an excellent job.
That's not a reflection on you. Please don't take it that way.
Mr. Chairman, could we go on?
Yes. I see Marcus left. So, George, are you going to present the...
I've got two others that I'd like to present. One is Office Administrator/Information Tech Support for the Sheriff's Department. And we had, we've combined jobs here. We had a job that we eliminated, which was 911 Director. That's being the job opportunities that were involved in this job have been split up between two different positions. One would be Communications Director, and one would be Office Administrator/Information Tech Support. It's gone through the Personnel Committee also, and we've refactored both jobs. The Office Administrator job is going from $41,912 to $49,329. And that's a requested salary. And Communications Director would be going from $48,245 to $58,262. Mark, would you?
Can you do the...
What was the first one? George, I'm sorry. Office Administrator IT Support, I think is what that was. And what was the range on the difference, and going from what to what? $41 to $49, I think. Because my paperwork says 58, $41 to 58.
Yeah, there's been a change. The current requested is $49,329. Previous salary was $41,912.
So, but this piece of paper says $16,000 increase? So that's inaccurate? Okay, I don't have accurate information.
What do we do? The Communications Director. This is a dispatch one.
And Thor, that's just for the additional appropriation. And when I advertised for it, I made sure I went for the hire. That was, I was given the 58,262 for that, so that's what I advertised for. But things have changed since then, so that's why it's, there's a difference.
So these people have assumed duties that Scott once had?
Yes.
Have you got any issues with Scott?
No.
None, because you're sure of it.
Not at this time.
We have a request for amendment for salary ordinance for the Office Administrator/Information Tech Support, changing requested salary from $41,912 to $49,329. In addition to that, I sat on the Personnel Committee, and it was factored and came in. In agreeance with Kim and what he has said about it, sometimes you read these and you think the job description is taken right off the factoring sheet. So we entertain a motion for the request for amendment of salary ordinance for the Office Administrator/Information Tech Support. Hearing no motion, we will go to the second one, which is the Communications Director on it. With the annual amount being $58,262, changing from $48,245. In conjunction with this, this also, if the position is approved on it, it goes from non-exempt to exempt, meaning there will be no additional wages for overtime. Entertain a motion for the request amendment of salary ordinance for the Communication Director.
I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm going to make a comment. What we've done today is just officially junked our rating system.
We have a motion for the change of salary for Communications Director. Do we have a second? I will second it for, open it for discussion. Have any additional discussion in reference to the Communications Director?
I don't think there was a motion made, was there?
No, I said, this is not a motion, but I can make a comment, officially junked our rating system.
I stand corrected, then. There is not a motion on the floor. Do we hear a motion? Request denied for lack of motion. We have one additional information from Janet. Would you like to explain it?
There is some changes being made in the office, and as you all got my letter, I said I am planning some changes within the Auditor's Office in preparation for the possible retirement in the future for the present Chief Deputy. I need to, there's going to be a transition period where the current Chief Deputy needs to kind of help me train the incoming Chief Deputy. I hope to make this change when she will start actually working as the Chief Deputy starting May 21st. So her first payday will be June 19th. So that's 14 pays that she will be paid at the new Chief Deputy salary. But because there is that transition period and that overlap, and we have budget time coming up, and Vicki is such a vital part of that, and is a necessity to help train Tamela in that position, I'm asking that we also keep Vicki at the same as well through the end of the year, and then come January 1st, it will be a deputy's salary. But the year-end stuff and budget time, I was hoping during the transition period that you guys would understand that I wanted to keep, you know, pay them both the same. And here in May, Tamela and I are going to conference, so I'm going to need someone to supervise the office while I'm gone. That will be Vicki. So they both will be serving, kind of, they both will keep some of the responsibilities of the Chief Deputy, depending on, you know, what's going on within the office. And the difference during the transition period, per pay period, is $249,88 per pay, which would be a total of $3,498.32 at the end of the year. This difference would come from my ineligible Homestead Fund that I have available in our office. And another example, you know, we just did recently with the County Attorney, you know, we'll have to, starting June, going through December. You know, it's, there's a training period, and there's a lot to take in to be able to, you know, make sure that that person's fully trained. And I'm also, I'm looking out for the future of our office. I want to make sure we have someone that could definitely step in if anything ever happened to me, or, you know, is very knowledgeable with everyone in the office in all of their positions. So, any questions?
We have a request from the Auditor's Office to entertain a motion.
I move we allow it.
I will second that. Open for discussion. Do you have this, Janet, and your Homestead, to pay for this?
I do, and I won't need an additional appropriation, so...
Any additional discussion? All those in favor of the request signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same.
Thank you.
And approval of the minutes for April the 4th. I saw a move, approve as written.
Second.
And a motion and second, all those, and any discussion? All those in favor signify by your right hand. Those opposed, the same. Anybody from the general audience have any additional? Councilman Banks, you have anything additional?
No.
Councilman Hodges?
No, sir. Yes, sir, I do. I would like to ask of you, as the Chair of the Board, your consideration for having our Department Heads present at our meetings for information gathering, or for just the face-to-face contact that we could have with them at that one time a month. If we're not able to get around and talk to everybody, I think it would be beneficial for myself, and I think it'd be beneficial for this Board to have our Department Heads at the meeting. So that's something that I would ask your consideration and...
Councilman Meehan?
Councilman Wur.
No, I, I think Thor, I agree with Thor. I think that can be very valuable. Meeting adjourned.